All right, well, I would like to thank, well, welcome you all to our Ward Eight Town Hall meeting and thank you all for joining us. As you've seen over the years, I've been holding Town Halls in Ward Eight and all the other years, all the other wards on an annual basis, usually in person or at least pre-COVID. But since then, we've been trying to do them remotely. Normally, we would be down at the bicentennial school, but today, again, we are remote. So usually what I do is spend a few moments talking about some city issues, some of which I suspect are of interest and concern to you. And then we take your questions, answer your questions, respond to your comments. Now, I've got a few other people from the city here that can help discuss some of the things that are relevant, we believe are relevant to you. We do have the National Police Department, Captain Bolton. You might be able to see him in the police conference room. We have Bobby Bagley, who's the Director of Public Health and Community Services. We have Sarah Marshant, who is the the Community Development Director, Head of Planning and Zoning and the like. And we're very fortunate to have Skip Cleaver. Skip, raise your hand there. Skip is the Ward Eight Alderman and also a state rep from Ward Eight. Well, it's hard to discuss any public issues without at least beginning with with the situation in our country down in Washington. I think that's been a very upsetting to almost everyone, the attack on the Capitol. I think what we need to do here is to recommit ourselves to civility, to respect, to treating all with respect, to no anger, no rancor. There certainly will be disagreements in the community, but we need, we have need to remember that we are neighbors and community members and conduct ourselves certainly at a much higher level than we've seen from some of our national leaders. The Board of Aldermen, I have to say, has done a very good job with us over the years, and but we just want to recommit ourselves. Now, one thing that has happened is the word has gone out over social media that there may be similar actions in all 50 states come in the coming days, especially as the inauguration approaches. We, I have talked with the police chief, Chief Carrigan, about this, and I, I don't, I'm sure they don't want to disclose all the details of what they're, what they're up to, but they, I can assure you, are very aware that they need to be fully engaged and on top of things and are taking all the measures, the steps that they can to make sure that they're fully prepared to meet any challenge and if anything did happen here, keep the community safe. I know they're working with the FBI and with the state police as well. And of course, it's, we must discuss the issue that's been at the top of everyone's mind, the top of everybody's concern for the last, almost for a year now, and that is the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic. We have done a good job, and Bobby Bagley is with us in terms of trying to eliminate, minimize, eradicate the virus here in Nashua. We have enacted a protocol for masks to be worn in public places. Public Health under Bobby Bagley's leadership has been in contact with all the people who are testing positive in the city and is working with them to make sure they quarantine and help provide any assistance that they can. But as the medical experts and the scientists predicted, as we've gone into winter, as winter has approached, the number of cases has climbed dramatically. We have, the number varies by the day, but approaching 600 active cases in Nashville right now. We, as of Monday, had about 50 people hospitalized between our two hospitals. Back in the summertime, we had maybe not, not 600, but 35 active cases. And we had even a handful of people in the hospital, in, in, both of them combined, six or seven. So just from those numbers, you can see that the number of cases has risen dramatically. Now, we of course are waiting, we are, we're following the science. We're working with medical experts, following the CDC and what the medical experts tell us. And they do tell us that, that until we get the vaccine, wearing masks is what we have to do. And that if we don't take this kind of precautionary steps, that the consequences will, will be worse. We know that for the, the people who become, who contract the virus, some people get off light and are fortunate to have a mild case. Others, it strikes a lot harder. And we've had over 60 people in Nashua pass away from this virus. 60 families have lost a loved one, loved one. Just this week, a member of the city family was lost as a result of COVID-19. A man named Andre Pelletier, who had worked for the city for 46 years in Public Works as an equipment operator, plowing your streets, fixing your roads. He contracted COVID-19, not at work, but outside, and was hospitalized, and within a couple of weeks, he, he passed away. And he leaves, of course, his wife and children, so we mourn with them and we just miss Andre. He was a really good guy and well-known and but that's the kind of thing that can happen with COVID-19. So our effort is to keep people safe, keep you and your families as safe as we possibly can. Now, the blight at the end of the tunnel is the vaccine. And we did get some good news in the governor's press conference today, which is that, starting so far, the people who had been vaccinated were those in Groups 1A and 1B as the, as the priority list was developed. The, those people include the first responders, police officers, firefighters, also our medical first responders, people in the hospitals, nurses, doctors. And has expanded beyond that into the, into Group 1B, the nursing homes, people who work there, some of the people in congregate care facilities. But, and I've been asked about this quite a bit. Today, we learned that according to the governor, starting on January 22nd, which of course is a week from tomorrow, people in 1B, well, people over, people 65 or is, over the age of 65, people over the age of 65 will begin to be able to register with, at a state website, Register at that website in order to make an appointment to get your first dose of the vaccine. The vaccines will be administered beginning a few days after that, January 26th. But for those that we know are most vulnerable, those over 65, you will be able to continue, to start to register come next, come a week from Friday. We don't know, you know, how crowded that website will be, but it's certainly good news that some of our seniors are more vulnerable people in our community will be able to continue, begin to be vaccinated in a couple of weeks. So I was very happy to hear that. Then they're telling us that beginning in, it's sometime in March, later, later in the year, sometime in March, between then and May, anyone who wants to get a vaccine can get it. So this is all good news, assuming that the vaccines can be delivered and administered on this time scale, on this time schedule. In a few months, a number of people will be vaccinated and we will of course be much more protected from the virus than we are today. But between now and then, we need to continue to, to wear our masks, follow the medical experts and continue with social distancing. To change the subject, one, one issue that I know is of concern to our neighborhood down in the South End, something that's been pending for some time, is the proposed Flatley Housing, that has been proposed, around 250 units of housing. I want to clarify what the city has been communicating to the Flatley Organization, which is that we believe that the, if this housing were to go ahead, that the traffic improvements that have been designed for Spit Brook Road would need to be done to accommodate any extra traffic. So the traffic improvements would need to be done. Number two, we want to know what the neighborhood thinks of the whole project. So we've asked them, to them, the company, to provide you with rendering, showing you what these buildings would look like, overheads to show where this, where this project would be. And we want you to, we'd like you to, you know, react to that and give the city your input. But we've said that a minimum, they need to do the traffic improvements. We've also said that it is not appropriate to proceed by special exception. Try to go to the ZBA and get a special exception. We think that this is a much too, me, a much too big a proposal. We've said very clearly that that's not the way to go, at least in our opinion. Now, any citizen and, you know, any owner has the right to seek a variance, but we believe that they need to go to the Board of Aldermen, request a rezoning, which would be required, and work through the process so that you would, you would have input over time and could provide input to the Board of Aldermen directly at committee, at a committee, also to the planning board, that would have to go to the planning board, so that there would be ample opportunity for neighborhood input, ample opportunity to discuss the traffic improvements and any other measures that might need to be taken in conjunction with the development of this housing. So that's where we stand. Now, we need to, again, if, if the company does apply for a variance, that goes to the ZBA and you should make your voices heard there if you don't think that's the way, the appropriate way to go. I would like to, there's many issues I could talk about, but one, I wanted to mention the budget. The COVID-19, with, the city is being hit with a number of very significant financial challenges right now, all at the same time, as it happens, all at the wrong time. Of course, we have COVID-19, which is going to raise expenses and can, and will reduce revenue to the city. So that's, that's number one. Number two, we, we, over the two years now, we've seen very rapidly rising healthcare costs for city employees, a total of about a 20% increase over two years. This amounts to $6 million additional in the city budget, or 3% of the tax rate. So in, in the, about 6% of, that you've seen your taxes go up over the last two years, including this, this past fall, about half of that is due to this, these increases in healthcare costs. Now, we've taken aggressive steps to looking to the future to limit these, this increase, this rate of increase in the future. We've designed a reformed HMO plan, which will save not only, which will require a less contribution from the city and would require the employees to contribute actually less on a weekly basis. Would raise deductibles particularly on, on the hospital inpatient procedures. We could discuss, if you're interested, we could discuss the details, but this would definitely help us with healthcare costs and help us, you, the hardworking taxpayers of Nashua, help us reduce that cost. But we need to include, we've, we've got it included for about five or six groups of employees at City Hall and with, with a number of unions. We need the Board of Aldermen to back us on this. It needs to go to, be applied to all employees, no exceptions, no exclusions. And if we can get it citywide, we will then, you know, have a, have a much better handle on healthcare costs. But in addition to the pandemic, in addition to the healthcare costs, we've been struck a, a very significant blow by the state of New Hampshire. They have raised, they have indicated that they are, that they are projecting that the city is going to receive $7 million less in school aid, from, down from $39 million to $32 million in this coming year. A big, a big hit. A lot of that is due to a artificially low number of free and reduced lunch children. Much of the aid is tied to the number of free and reduced lunch kids. And since the pandemic began, lunches have been free for everyone. And that's a U.S. Department of Education policy. So lunches have been free for everyone. So there is much less incentive for a family who could potentially qualify for free and reduced lunch to fill out the paperwork, because you don't need to fill out the paperwork to get a free, a free lunch. So around two-thirds or 60% of the families, we've, you know, school department has been able to persuade them to fill out the paperwork, but a third to 40% know. And, and therefore, we, we, we don't think there are less families. We think there might be more, given the hardships that COVID-19 has really inflicted on the, on the community and some of the, especially lower wage workers. And therefore, we, we were artificially low, but according to the state, you know, that doesn't matter. And we're going to lose a lot of money because of it. Now, we're working, trying to work with Skip and our state legislators to get a change there, but you know, we just don't know what's going to happen. Number two, the, the state has hit us with a $4.4 million increase in the, in city pension costs. City employees are part of the state pension system. They have, and I could talk about the details for some time, but they have not only broken a promise to the communities to pay part of the cost, but they have mismanaged the system and the costs that that the city needs to bear for this has gone from $8 million up to over, to around $30 million over not too many years. So now we've been hit with another $4.4 million increase. This is unrelated to any wage increases. This is on top of, you know, any kind of wage increase. So when you put those two state actions together, the loss of school aid and the pension, that's $11 million. How does that translate to your, to you, to your tax rate? It's 5%. So before we even get to the city budget, if these, if the state does not reverse these actions, it would increase taxes by 5%, which we find totally, totally unacceptable. And the state should stop solving its problems by just pushing more and more onto the property taxes. But that is something we could discuss if, you know, in more detail if you wish. But I thought I would give, I wanted to turn it over to, and I see now Laura Tilerski on the call. I didn't see you before, Laura. She is also a state rep from, from Ward Eight. She is the Chair of the National Delegation. She's very concerned about these additional costs that I was just telling you about. And so she is working hard to try to reverse those things. So hopefully, we can be successful. Now, I, I'm being joined by, as I said, Bobby Bagley. Maybe she could just talk about the activities of the, of public health. Again, working seven days a week for nearly a year, but, you know, been doing a great job. But Bobby, maybe it would take a couple of minutes to talk about public health and maybe we could get a couple of minutes from Sarah on the issue of Flatley, because we did, we have been getting questions about that from, from the neighborhood. So Bobby, are you, could you fill us in a little bit more?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you for inviting me to your Town Hall meeting. Hello, everyone. I'm Bobby Bagley, the Director for the Division of Public Health and Community Services. And we have, as the mayor said, been greatly involved in the pandemic response to COVID over the past 10 months. And over that time, we've been able to focus on disease investigation as well as providing clinics for COVID testing throughout. I believe we started in the last month, the last week of April, and we've been providing those clinics ever since then. What we've had the opportunity to see is how much infection, in fact, there is out in the community, and I can give a, just a few quick numbers. From March 1st, 2020 till now, January 14th, 2021, in the state of New Hampshire, we have 54,778 cases that have been reported. We currently have, what do we have here, 1,051 cases that are currently under investigation. And to bring that locally home to us here in Nashua, since that time, you have a cumulative of individuals that have been infected, 4,848, which represents 8.9% of all the infections in the state. As far as those that have been hospitalized since the beginning of the pandemic, Nashville's had 114, which represents 12.1% of the numbers cumulative in the state. And we have had 63 deaths that's reported as of today, which represent 7%, in Nashville. And this information is all found on the state's website at nh.gov. It is a site that's an active, interactive website, so it's updated on a daily basis with the information here. What else is on here that's interesting? So with, with that data, you know, that's there, the responsibility that we have as a health department is to respond to those diseases or those cases, do the investigation, make sure that we provide the education around isolation and quarantining so that we can slow the spread of this infection. We've been doing this in the midst of also trying to stay on top of our other public health duties and so our welfare, environmental health, and community health departments can still continue to meet their obligations with some of the other deliverables that we have outlined in some of our state grants, state funding that we have. One of the things that we've been working on this week, as you guys have probably heard with the announcement from the governor, the vaccine rollout is now increasing the age group to 65. We were supposed to have started out with those who were 75 and above, and now, within a week, that has dropped to 65, which is great for the community. However, it's going to be a challenge for us to ramp up the vaccines administration from either our health department through public clinics, through the hospitals, through the fix site that's set up at Nashville High South currently, and through our private practitioners offices. So there are quite a few ways that folks will be able to go to get their vaccinations. And the governor also announced that people will be able to register as of Friday, the 22nd, which is next week. And again, that's going to be quite a bit of, of a load that each of our entities are going to take on. Our public health department will be working with our partners. And so we have a planning meeting scheduled with our, one of our hospitals tomorrow, because they have to figure out how they're going to get a throughput of 1,000 people per day, up to 2,000 per day to meet the, the goals that have been established. It's going to be quite an undertaking, because private practice offices are also supposed to be delivering vaccine. And so what we're going to ask of our community in Nashua, our greater Nashua, and in the state is for people to have some patience. And the reason for that is even after that first dose of vaccine is administered, we still have to make sure that we maintain our vigil, maintain our vigilance around masking and social distancing, because the vaccine just gets your body ready for the second dose, which will occur either 21 or 28 days, depending on the vaccine that people receive. Pfizer's a 21-day period, and Moderna is a 28-day. In that time period, folks are still going to have to wear masks, still social distance, still do their due diligence, just continue to work with us to slow the spread of this infection. So our staff has been repurposed to do everything in response to the activities related to COVID, as well as making sure we keep track of getting our flu clinics and flu vaccinations out there, because it's also flu season, so that activity has begun in the state as well. Making sure that we can do our work around lead poisoning prevention. We're going to be working with Sarah's team around that. As that rolls out, we still have plenty of work to do with our restaurants and all things. So we still continue to do all those things as we work to respond to this pandemic. And we just ask for your continued work with us, because we have a great deal of the population working with us, because it's the society's role as a whole to protect the public health. So thank you so much for all the things that you all have been doing. And we just ask for patience as we continue to go through this next phase, which kicks off vaccines, and that's going to be over a period of time. But it does not position us, again, to not wear masks yet, to not stop with the social distancing. And I'm, I'm saying this a lot, because I really want us to understand that we have to keep doing those things and keep working together as we do those. Mayor, that's all I have. Oh, I do have one more thing. So we do have, I think this is really important, Legislative Breakfast, that will be done by Zoom. We have that scheduled for January 29th. So we'll be sending out the information so that people can register starting tomorrow for that Legislative Breakfast, and we're still looking at the continuance of resiliency in our community. And so we'll have a panel of speakers that'll speak to that, coming from the lens of how COVID has affected our work across a number of organizations, mental health, our education, public health, and even our volunteers, because we've had some fantastic volunteers in the community helping us. And that's all I have, Mayor, unless people have questions.
All right, why don't we turn it over to Sarah for a couple of minutes and then open it to any questions people might have of you. So this is Sarah Marshant, Director of Community Development, Head of Planning, Zoning, Building Code, Transit, and a couple of other things.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see so many faces here. So I wanted to talk to you about two things. Certainly, I'll touch on the, the Flatley development, echo any of the mayor's comments, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions about that. Again, there is no application before the city. We just know he's having a neighborhood meeting tomorrow, Saturday morning, is our understanding. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is Imagine Nashua. The city is undertaking its first master planning process in 20 years. And what does that mean, Bobby? Is it important to you, right? This master planning process is the high-level community engagement and feedback from you to help us understand, where do you see Nashua in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years? You know, what are things that we cherish and we want to keep the same? What are things that we could be doing better? You know, if you think about Amherst Street or GW Highway, what those, what might you want those to look like in five or 10 years from now? So we are undergoing this project, Imagine Nashua. We're looking for your feedback as much as possible. You can check out imagine.nashuanh.gov. I will put it in the chat. That's the best place to put your feedback in. We just launched an interactive map where you can put your comments directly on a map. You can do ideas of where we need to develop or redevelop, new ideas we have or areas we need to conserve and protect. So that's one of the ways you can give your feedback. There's some, a bunch of information on that page as well as an existing conditions report. In addition, if you are interested, if you have a book group, if you have a club that you meet, if you have any kind of group that you regularly meet with, we're doing small, focused group meetings. Just let us know, myself and Julie and Matt. And one of us would be more than happy to have a Zoom meeting with you and hear your ideas directly. And we'll get all of that information incorporated into the new plan. So I'm more than happy to answer questions, but that's what I had. Thank you.
All right, so will do any of our Ward Eight residents have questions for Bobby or for Sarah or thoughts? If so, just speak up or raise your hand or...
Hey, Sarah. Paul Paddy here.
Hi, Paul.
Oh, yes, sir. I just wanted to say thank you for the Imagine Nashua and for, and Mayor Dottis, for that process. I was able to put a, an entry on there for Sam and Brooke in terms of conservation and such, and also echoed it onto the local Monica Drive, Monica Drive Block Party Facebook group. And I kind of put the link out there so they could comment too on what they'd like to, you know, see for the area, whether it's protecting Sam and Brooke or, or other things. So just want to thank you for that opportunity to do that and to, for our voices to be heard. Appreciate that.
And while Paul is on here, I will mention that Paul Patty is the, on the, on the city's rail committee and also serves in a similar committee at the state level. I think it's called up there, the rail and it has a different name, but rail and tran, it's broadened to buses, rail and surface transportation. It's an advisory committee, and there is some good news on rail, which is that at long last, the state through the Executive Council has awarded the contract for the final planning phase of the Capitol Corridor Rail Project to an engineering firm, a very qualified one called AECOM. And that, that contract was just awarded right at the end of December. So that work will be starting, and I think the projected timeframe is around two years to report back to the state with a, with a definite plan as to how this could be accomplished, including a funding mechanism. So this is not, you know, you know, another study, some, it is actually... So this is not, you know, you know, another study, some, it is actually, uh, beginning the environmental impact work, some initial design work and doing everything necessary to, uh, qualify for federal support, federal subsidy, which all of course, Mass Transit has. And is also, uh, uh, required, uh, to develop a, a financial plan so that whatever they come forward with would be, assuming the plan is followed, could be realistically accomplished. But thank you, Paul, because he's been a very dedicated rail supporter for, for a long time.
Thanks, I just appreciate it.
Uh, now, does anybody have thoughts, questions about anything? I did get some, we did get some pre-submitted questions, which I could kind of work on if, but, uh, does anybody have?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Wayne Georgiana and I'm calling from Peel Road. Thank you for, uh, allowing this opportunity to do a Q and A. Because sometimes with some of these meetings, we don't get to do the Q and A, right? So, um, I, I actually have two questions, one for yourself and then one for, um, Bobby Bagley, if I may. If that's all right with you guys, I'd like to ask you, Mr. Mayor. You, you mentioned, you mentioned this, the, we lost seven million dollars, um, or six million dollars in school funding from the state. You said it was already artif- artificially, um, elevated. But doesn't that have to directly do with the eight hundred and sixty-five disenrollments of the school this year? And in fact, I believe there's going to be a lot more coming down the road. So how are we going to be prepared for that?
Um, so Wayne, the, the biggest, the big factor is the free and reduced lunch, which I'm saying is artificially low. Um, uh, you know, we think we probably have more, more free and reduced lunch than we did before. Uh, I believe, and I, I could check my figures, but I believe one point four million of the loss would be related to the, uh, declining the, the reduced enrollment. Now with the school, but when I asked the school department about this, what they tell me is that I think about somewhere between five and six hundred of those kids are in the pre-K and K level grades. And they believe that those kids will come back, uh, right away. Because, you know, a pre-K parent who's holding, you know, just got their kid at home, uh, is probably going to come back to the public school when, uh, the public schools open. Same with the kindergarten children. So they think that, you know, most of that loss will come back. Uh, two to three hundred are scattered throughout the grades. School department thinks some of those kids will come back, but of course that remains a stain. But the reason I focused on the free and reduced lunch is that that is the biggest part of the, you know, that is much bigger in terms of the amount we're losing than the, it's about double the, uh, uh, nearly double the, um, uh, loss that we would result from the decline enrollment. And, uh, clearly the free and reduced lunch kids are still with us, you know?
Right, but we're still having kids, it seems like everybody I talked to is disenrolling their children and sending them to different high schools, different schools, wherever they get homeschooling. Um, is that a concern for you in the future?
Yes, I mean, we want, I mean, I think what your question goes to is, you know, the schools aren't open and all the room.
Correct.
All the, you know, the education or, you know, there's been some kids that have gone back from, from time to time, but mostly remote or all kids. We all want to send our kids back to school, the Nashville kids back to school. And we all want to keep our kids, our, our community safe. And of course, those are the two, can, you know, considerations that the school board, uh, needs to take into account. Now, I want to make it clear that I do not have any role in the school department, no responsibility. I don't have a vote. I'm just like you, a citizen from the outside. Now you're going to say, well, you have more influence, so maybe that's true, but I do not have a vote.
Yes.
They don't always listen to what I have to say. I can guarantee you that even the aldermen don't necessarily listen to what I have to say. But of course I've thought about and looked at this issue of, of, uh, school, of the schools. I mean, we know that, and you've pointed this out, or, you know, at least by implication, pointed this out, that kids are suffering a learning loss. We know that's the case. Uh, some kids just can't learn and I, you know, I've, I've talked to many parents, you know, my, 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 one of my kids does well with it. My, you know, the, the family lives across the street or, you know, one of, one of the kids does well with it, the other not so much. Some kids don't have enough technology to really be adequately connected. You, you've got to ask, how can you teach a first grader to read remotely? Uh, it's probably difficult or impossible. So there's definitely a learning loss. Um, and we want to get kids back as soon as, as soon as we can. But I do not have a vote. I have looked at, you know, and I've been asked about Manchester. Well, there, you know, the Manchester mayor did X, Y, and Z. Well, in Manchester, the mayor is chair of the school board, chair of the school board. Here, I don't even have a vote. Now I look at the state criteria for return and one of the, I mean, there's several factors that get, that have to be applied if you apply this sort of, it's a guideline, you know, it's, one is, uh, the level of community transmission. Now we definitely have substantial community transmission at this point. I mean, we're, we greatly exceed a couple of the, uh, criteria. And they say that of the, even if you exceed one of the cri- criteria, having to do with the positivity rate, the new infections over fourteen days and the hospitalizations over fourteen days. We clearly are way, you know, we're way over on, uh, in new infections and we're significantly over on the positivity rate. That should be factored in with other considerations having to do with the status at each school. Now, of course, the schools aren't open, so you can't really determine that, uh, if.
Right.
But if certain things happen at the schools, then the school needs to be closed. But they do suggest that the availability of staff needs to be uh, considered. Now, if I were deeply enmeshed in the school department, I mean, you'd really need to think about like, I mean, I would, I would love to see when it's appropriate, a transition to a more hybrid model under, under the, under the, under the state system. That's as far as we could ever go. Under the state guidelines, that's as far as you could ever go. You'd still need to do it school by school, staff by staff. You really need to be able to assure the parents and the kids that there will be enough staff. I know we're down like eighty subs, you know, so there are a number of teachers that are out because of health issues, underlying health issues. So you would really need to know the, the details of the staffing situation at each school and sort of approach this school by school. Uh, and I'm not in a position to do that. I've not been invited to do that. And therefore, you know, um, I, I look at this and I see that we are, we are definitely, we have definitely substantial, uh, community transmission. And the state guidelines basically say be very careful under those circumstances. I mean, it's far more complex than that, but in terms of, you know, like three pages of guidelines, single space. But, uh, that's basically what they're telling you, you know?
Right. I, yeah, I, I definitely understand that.
No, I understand the frustration. I mean, you know, um, I, you know, heard from a number of kids are not, you know, who are suffering, um, either a learning loss or, you know, psychologically grappling with all the problems of, you know, no social interaction with anyone. We're all grappling with that, but I'm sure it's more difficult for some of the young children. So, um, that's really all I can say about it. You know, I think, um, the community should be working towards when it's appropriate. But again, this is up to the school board, uh, trying to get back hybrid when, when that's feasible.
Right. So all of the constituents of you, seeing as how you're the mayor, um, a lot of people have reached out to you. Um, and I get that the school board is in a, you know, they're on little land of misfits because they can't figure out, they don't even have a plan, Mayor. They don't have a plan.
I'm not so sure. I think, what I heard, what I, I heard that they said that if they reach the moderate level, now we're, I'm looking at the state guidelines right now. If they reach the moderate level on two of the three, uh, two of the three criteria for community transmission that they will then work, they will then, uh, you know, I guess consider, but I think that means maybe institute hybrid.
Right.
We don't have, you know, even if one is over, we do not have two at a moderate level. I mean, there's no way we have that.
Right. No, I understand. So, thank you. I appreciate you taking the time. Um, that was a fair amount of time for you to answer my question. And, um, I have a question for.
Important question though. I mean, it is a very important question. Uh, Bobby may have thoughts on this as well.
Yes. So, uh, Bobby, hi, I'm Wayne. It's nice to meet you. Um, and I appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions. I have a quick back-to-back question for you. One is, um, the, um, epidemiologist Fauci, Dr. Chan, our state epidemiologist says kids need to be in school. They're not super spreaders. Schools aren't super spreaders. So what, what besides the numbers, if everybody else has plans, what is it or why is it that because what you say the school board goes by, but yet when we have these professionals, what separates you from these professionals that are, um, that are calling these shots? I'm just asking, I'm, I'm asking because I don't know your background. Um, I don't even know if you're an epidemiologist. I'm going to assume you are because you're in that position.
So thanks for, um, the question. As Mayor said, the questions that you have are really good questions. Um, my background is in, um, I have a dual professional, uh, career in nursing and in public health, um, at the master's level, trained in both of those fields. Um, I've been working in public health for about twenty-three years now. With the, um, with Dr. Fauci and Dr. Chan and, um, and even the folks, all of us at the health department have the same, we're all on the same page with kids do learn better when they are in school. Um, as far as a super spreader issue, the type of event that allows for an opportunity for a super spread to occur. So if there is a person, um, that's in a place where there are lots of other folks that are there, um, and they happen to, um, be infectious and maybe be asymptomatic, meaning they don't know that they have symptoms and they're able to move about in a crowd, they can spread a virus from one person to another person to another person without those folks knowing it. And then those folks then go back to either work or home or doing other activities and then they continue to spread. That's what a super spreading event is. And then when you go back and all your data and you track everything, you can kind of pull it back to, this may have started, right, through, um, investigation here at this event where this one person may have infected two or three people around them and then it exponentiates. That's a super spreader event. We all know that kids will learn better in a face-to-face, uh, setting in school. I used to be an educator myself. I used to teach at Riviera University and actually developed a public health program there. So, um, and have worked with students online and on the ground. So I am familiar with how kids, uh, learn at the college level at least and what's the most beneficial. And so we do know that the younger kids, especially kindergartners, um, kids that have developmental disabilities will learn better when they're in that, in the school setting face-to-face. What we tend to look at in public health, um, Wayne, is, um, the opportunities of, um, disease spread and how do we stop or slow that from happening? We've been very, um, fortunate in Nashville in that because we've had the hybrid setting, that's reduced the amount of disease that we have seen in our schools. So for instance, the, um, younger grades, kindergarten and the, um, the kids that are in the, the, um, special ed programs have been able to be in school. We've seen infections in those kids while they were in school, but because the number has been smaller, there hasn't been huge outbreaks in those settings. What we have seen in our investigations over this past ten months and even most recently, uh, since the, um, the holidays, that there has been tremendous spread in households and families. And so investigations that were done over the past couple of weeks, and I also do disease investigation. Uh, last week I investigated about thirty cases between Tuesday and Friday. And, um, in those families, up to a hundred percent of the household was infected COVID positive, not contacts, but they were infected and households that were from two to, uh, five to seven people in the household. And so when we look at those types of events of spread that are happening in the community and then we think about the setting that those folks may have to go to, like for instance, in a school, if the kids were in school face-to-face and some of those kids were in school asymptomatic, that's how you get a super spreader type of event. The child themselves is not the super spreader, it's the situation or circumstance that they're, that they're in in a school setting that can, that can cause that to happen. We've seen, um, some of our athletes, um, test positive and when that happens, then their season stops or slows down. So we have, because of what the school, uh, decided with how they were going to integrate the kids back in school slowly and watching the data, that's how Nashville has been able to avoid a huge, um, um, you know, outbreak in some of their different schools, whether it's in the grammar school, the middle school or the high school. But we have seen these school-aged kids infected ever since this, um, pandemic started. In fact, sure, first case in Nashville was in a family and that whole family was sick. So we've been, we've been fortunate, we've, I think the school has made some good decisions in how they have rolled things out because they were looking out for the best interest, not only of those, the kids, but the families, the teachers are also vulnerable in those situations as well, um, as well as everybody else that works in there. We've investigated cases where they were, um, the maintenance folks, there were, there were kids, there were school nurses. We've, we've seen pretty much everybody that is, that is in school infected with this virus, um, over the past ten months.
Well, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say everyone.
Break in there and I would, I think we should take, see if there are any other questions on other subjects, but it doesn't help, as much as I admire and, uh, respect Dr. Mosley, it doesn't help that the school superintendent has, you know, taken another job. Unfortunately, that's happened at, you know, the wrong time.
Yeah, right. I just have one last quick question, if I may, just one last quick question. Bobby, so every, the numbers are based on the people that are positive. How is that compared to the number of people that get tested and are negative? Cause I think that's how we should be looking at this, not just the number of positives, but the number of people tested overall and then be compared to the positives and then that number, that determination should be made.
All right.
So how does that, how is that not happening?
Let me answer that question. And I do think we should do something else. We've had a huge.
Sure, I appreciate your time.
At the last, at the last public health, uh, clinic, a week, I don't know what's come back from Tuesday, but from a week ago Tuesday, twenty percent positive, twenty percent positive. That's like off the, you know, it's almost like off the charts. Now, overall, this, you know, during that week, because tests were done outside the city clinic, the number is thirteen percent. But that is a high, that is more than we had in the spring. That's more than we had in March, you know, when things, when March, April, when things just broke out. So there's definitely, you know, a lot of COVID around and.
Right.
So.
With that twenty percent, what's that based on? What's that number based on twenty percent?
Twenty, none of the people that walked into the clinic tested positive. Now, if you look at sort of national standards and everything, that is a very high number. In the summertime, we were running one to two percent positive. Now, we just ran a clinic with twenty percent positive. So, um, yeah, eighty percent were positive, but one-fifth of the people who showed up had COVID nineteen actively. So, you know, that, that's a high, that's a high number. But is there any?
Well, thank you.
Uh, anyway, I.
Thank you for your time, Mayor.
And I know you're not the only one who's concerned on the subject, Wayne. So, you know, I don't mind spending time. We can maybe spend more time offline talking about it because other.
Yes, I would love to. I would love to set up a meeting. Yeah, that would be great.
Um, now I did arrange a meeting. I met with, uh, Dr. Mosley via Zoom, you know, and some other parents at a time and we were talking about the, this issue, but, uh, we're going to meet again, but Dr. Mosley was not able to make the second meeting. What about, anybody else have any other questions on anything else, the Flatley, the budget, uh, anything else that?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, Stephen Euro, uh, Spindelwick. So a question on the master plan. I remember like over twenty years ago, a meeting, I think, I believe it was with Mayor, uh, Rob Wagner. We discussed the master plan, uh, at bicentennial. So the, I understand we're doing an update to the master plan, but is this an ongoing living document? Meaning that the, the plan that we did many, many years ago, is that still in effect? And what we are doing is merely updating that plan?
I'll let there a fairly sophisticated question, so I will, I'm going to ask Sarah to fill you in.
That's a great question, Stephen. This is an entire rewrite, an entire update of the master plan that was done twenty years ago. At that point in time, after the master plan, which we intend to do this time. The community came together, we created the master plan, we rewrote the land use codes to reflect the goals of that plan. And we fully intend to do that with this plan. So right now, this is an ongoing process. For the next several months that we're hoping to interactively hear from more and more of you. And we will be rewriting the master plan. The old plan will no longer be. And we will, the intention is to follow it up and rewrite the land use code to reflect. The values that we hear and the goals that we hear from the community this time.
But on that, I mean, we had an existing plan in place and I understand we're redoing the plan. Are we, this, is the plan a living document is what I'm asking, meaning that are we currently going by the existing master plan until we make the updates to the new plan?
Yes, I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, yes. But certainly the community has undergone some significant changes since.
Sure. No, no question. I mean, it's, it's an ongoing thing. Now, do we post that master plan on the website at all so that the citizens can view that as a non, as a living document?
Yes, that's on the, that's on the website, right? Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You know, we would very much welcome your input into the update or the, the completely new master plan. I mean, the. We've, we've got some very significant issues that need to be considered, redevelopment of downtown. We're at least going to look at what might work out at Danny Webster College. That's owned by a gentleman from China who doesn't seem to. Totally understand the situation here, but. I, I understand he thought he was buying an operating college. But I think we could assist him if we were, you know, if the master playing exercise can come forward with, well, here's something that could work, you know, that. Work for the neighborhood, work for the city, maybe we should think about trying to move forward in that direction. We don't know how that's going to come out, you know, but no, no preconceived ideas, but that's an issue.
Sure. Doing the, the ward meetings, kind of similar to this is that I know that's the last time we did with the master plan. And I thought that was very, very beneficial.
Yes, we're going to have, you know, a lot of public meetings. Now, we would, you know, in a neighborhood like yours, you know, there's not going to be a lot of changes, you know, we're not going to propose that you go to multifamily or something like that. I mean, you're, you're in a stable. Developed, nice, you know, great place to live type of neighborhood. So. Most of the focus will be on, you know, areas where there might be redevelopment. In the few areas where there's undeveloped land, there's not much of that left. And that's why. A, a good deal of focus will be in the downtown area because there are plenty of redevelopment possibilities down here. And, you know, we will be looking at what the community thinks, in what direction the community thinks we should go. But, you know, that certainly the South End Commercial Area would be, you know, would get another look, you know. Spitbrook Road and Daniel Webster Highway and. Over in there, potential rail station, things like that. So the city's going to be looking at all kind of open issues, things that kind of have, in your neighborhood, again, things, you know, it's kind of a resolved, here's, here's the way the neighborhood's going to be. And we like it that way, but elsewhere there are redevelopment or changes that could be made, redirections that could be taken.
Okay, thank you again.
I understand that Michaela Blanchard has a question. I see, is Michaela, yeah, I see Michaela is on.
Yes, sorry. I just put my chat in the comments. I just wanted it to be known that. The, when they say hybrid was rolled out, it, it really wasn't. I mean, my daughter is in first grade and was only in the building for five days. So like, I think there's a lot of misinformation being. Put out by the, the school board that I think all the residents that maybe have grown kids or don't have kids should know. And that they're just denying those that have the chance hybrid in this metric they just put out. If they use that same metric in September. They would have at least been in the building and been able to at least meet their teachers in person. And, you know, have access to that education and I don't think that that's fair. I mean, I, I just said, I, my comment is there. I work in Massachusetts and have been in the building full-time since September and have not, I get COVID tested every week. And I have not had, it's just super frustrating and it honestly, like, we're new to Nashville in the last three years and it really makes me want to. Go somewhere else where I can have education for my kids. So it's just super frustrating to not be heard and then to come on and say. I understand it's not like your problem, but I just want everybody that's not involved in education to have that knowledge that it's a huge issue right now.
Well, looking back, of course, it would have been, had this criteria been applied, we would have had hybrid in the fall, as you have suggested.
Right. And I'm concerned that there was no criteria in the fall, considering.
So, you know, it's late. There's no question about that. You know, it would have been a lot better if it came earlier. Now, how is your daughter or son, I think you said daughter, doing?
I have two. So my daughter's in first grade and my son is in third grade. My daughter has a hearing disability, so she wears hearing aids, so it's very difficult on Zoom, so I picked hybrid for her. And you're right, you can't teach a six-year-old to read. I mean, I'm, while I was talking, I was talking to her, she was trying to do a writing assignment on Zoom, like. On like the Seesaw app, it's, it's impossible. Like I work all day, my husband works all day and we come home and it's like. I, they're not getting educated and my son has an IEP and it's a reading disability and it's total mess, like it's. And they were, they're only going from nine to one and that's including a half hour specialist and lunch and recess. So they, nine to one with an hour and a half of. The self-study time, tell me how a six-year-old can self-study. I just want everybody else to be aware because it's like super frustrating. And I don't really know who to go to for support of our kids and like the future of our city, that is the future of our city. Like, I don't know how else to. Implicate. My concerns.
Well, I mean, one, I mean, I, again, I feel your frustration. The. One thing, I mean, this doesn't solve your problem, like, but. We're work, we're trying to work with the congressional delegation to get, you know, some COVID relief, some, you know, some. Funds for the city. I mean, we could, we need to try to address this learning gap. Once, once things get back closer to normal, there is going to be this learning gap and. Were we to be able to. Tutoring or some, something else, you know, in some way to try to catch kids up because it's.
Tutoring for all the kids, like, that's going to be.
Well, it's something, you know, summer school, I don't know, something.
I mean, by the time everybody's vaccinated anyway, it's going to be like, they're going to be out of school over a year and a half.
I know that.
Like that is, I don't even have words. I don't, I don't know how the city is. Even allowing that to happen and a year and a half of kids not being educated in a building. Like my son has even, he's, he's never even seen his teacher in person. Like there wasn't even a meet and greet in the, the fall to say like, hey, I'm your teacher, like this, I'm a human in person versus a screen.
All right. Well, thank you for at least speaking up about it.
Thank you. And if we can share that with everybody, everyone tell everyone. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions or comments or?
I have some, I have a quick thing.
Laura.
Laura, Laura Tulersky. This is more a comment of just being a neighbor up here on Shakespeare Road. I'm a little concerned about the Flatley neighborhood meetings. It's come to my attention that there are very few people who are getting these notices, including people who are butters and border the Flatley property. Neighbors of mine. And after the last Flatley meeting, they only heard of through someone else. We asked that question, how can we be notified about these meetings? And got an email address. I emailed them, got a response, you're on our list. And tonight with Sarah mentioning that meeting, that was the first thing, first time I've ever heard of this. So. I just want to express some concern. If you, if the city believes that neighbors are actively engaged in these discussions. I can assure you that we're not. And there are a lot of people who have no idea that there's a meeting coming. So. Sarah, I know you were just simply facilitating them with those meetings, but is there any way that things are being posted anywhere, either on the Flatley site? Or with you so that we can direct people there? I would appreciate that information. Thank you.
I mean, I want to reiterate that we do not favor the. Special exception approach, you know, one hearing at the ZBA. We favor. And we're encouraging the company to pursue a rezoning, which is a legislative act. Requires an introduction of a rezoning, requires a planning board consideration, planning board hearings, Board of Aldermen hearings. Where formally and officially you could provide input and the city could react and. You know, decide what action, you know, is appropriate in, in light of that. So, you know, these are not city meetings, but we've, we've told them, look, you got to get the, at least find out, try to find out what the. We've asked the company to try to find out what the neighborhood's thinking. We think that's a good idea going into this, even though we still think you got to go for a rezoning. Now, Skip, do you? Are you here? Are you still on, Skip? Do you have anything you want to add? Skip Cleaver.
I think Skip had, he told me earlier, he had another meeting up at like seven fifteen. He was going to have to leave early.
Okay. Well, Skip is someone you should talk to about this issue because, of course, the alderman, assuming. We, they eventually go the rezoning route, the aldermen are the ones who will want to get your input and will. Ultimately vote on the, on whether the rezoning would be, would be allowed. Sarah.
I just wanted to answer Laura's question specifically about the meeting tomorrow. We are not hosting the Zoom. We are not part of it at all for tomorrow's meeting. I got that information from somebody who sent me an email. Who did receive the letter. I am more than happy to reach out to them and just send an email and say, you know, we're hearing that. People haven't heard and director butters haven't heard and you should make every effort to reach out, but. It isn't something that, that. I, I shared it because it was sent to my email inbox by somebody else today. So it is on Flatley to be doing that. Kevin Walker is who you should be contacting. For that information. I can put his email in this chat, in the chat.
Pretty sure I've actually, I've already exchanged emails with him when I requested to be put on all notices. So I'll, I'll get back in touch with Kevin.
Okay. And I apologize for that. It really, it is in a city meeting.
No, I understand. It's, it's not your fault, but I just want to try to figure out how we can clarify it and I thank you for passing it on.
Could one of you who knows more about the Flatley thing say roughly where it's at? I, in my mind, I'm not sure where this new development is.
Sarah.
If you are driving on Spitbrook Road. And, sorry, not Spitbrook. If, do you know where Terra Heights is? The innovative, Innovative Way. The Sheraton, the Radisson is what it is now, right?
That's what I was curious if it was up that way.
It is. It's up behind there. And so he's proposing some additional housing up in that area behind the. One hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred Innovative Way.
Okay. So if you, you know, if you, when you drive on the highway. You can see those apartments, you know, if you're between X one and two, you can see those apartments up on the hill. It's sort of close to those.
So are these units apartments or houses?
Apartments. He's talking about apartments, townhouse style apartments, right?
He's talking about two hundred and fifty-ish apartments and I think another thirty-ish, forty-ish townhouses.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I mean, we haven't, again, we haven't received an official. Proposal or application, so we're just kind of going on what's been verbally said. All right. Well, I usually, given that we're with Zoom and the Zoom meetings. Kind of get a little tiring more quickly than in-person meetings. We usually try to wrap up at about an hour, just so you might come back next time. But if anybody has any final question or comment, certainly. We could, you know, spend a few more minutes. Does anybody have anything else you'd like to raise? Tim, are you trying to raise your hand or are you just?
I am, Mayor, if I may, just very quickly. So Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, thank you for having me. I just thought I would put a teaser out there that next week at this time roughly, I think six PM. We are going to do a Ward Eight parking meeting to discuss whether we should have overnight parking. In Ward Eight on the, on the street. So if you have an interest in that subject matter, we would love to have you. We'll have our parking consultant at this meeting. And we can have, we have a, can have a discussion and ultimately take people's thoughts and opinions on, on the, on the subject matter. Thank you, Mayor.
So Tim is holding a parking. Meeting, overnight parking meeting in each of the nine wards. I mean, the way this has evolved is. Parking on the street has not been allowed in Nashville for, for decades, many decades. Was not allowed. And then in the last six years or so, the city. Began to allow overnight parking on certain designated streets in high density areas downtown for neighborhood residents only with an annual permit. Costing ten dollars a month. Seems like it's worked pretty well, but that's a different situation than you face down in Ward Eight where everybody. You know, in these neighborhoods, a lot of people don't have driveways and. You know, there was nowhere for people to park. So we're trying to make it better for residents. Your neighborhood is of course in a different situation. So if you have thoughts or input. You know, tune into that meeting. All right. Well, again, thank you all for attending. Thank you for the very robust discussion and. I always learn something and I, I appreciate your thoughts and your comments. And please, if you want, if you have anything where you'd like to follow up, just get in touch. So I hope, hope you have a good evening.